I don't think you're getting a headshot taken.
Welcome, everyone. We are going to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of meeting with our attorneys for counsel on student matters and educational matters as well. I need a motion. Carrie, do you want to leave me in the second?
Yeah.
So it's 5:44. And a second. Krista, thank you. And all those in favor? We are now at 5:55. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, Carrie. Welcome back. You're returning from our executive session. I need a motion to open to our public meeting. Carrie, thank you. And Glenn, all those in favor? Motion passes. Six zero. We are short one today. Maybe I just stuck at work. Okay, so we now move on to our pledge.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. So first up, we actually have our August 22, 2019, District Public Hearing on District Wide Code of Conduct. So we'll cover it a little bit, then we allow for public comment for anyone who has anything they would like to say on that matter. So we'll start with Dr. Gosh, please.
Okay, great, thank you. Good evening. This is our annual public hearing on our District Wide Code of Conduct. Both the hearing and the code of conduct itself are legal requirements. The code of conduct, the actual document, is linked to this presentation, which is in Board Docs, as well as being, will be posted on our website tomorrow morning. So as I mentioned previously, our District Wide Code of Conduct, as it is written, meets the legal requirements set out by the Commissioner of Education for New York State. This document is in a multi-year transition process. If you've been on the board for a few years, you know that we've talked about trying to shift this to more restorative practice. That's a transformational sort of shift that can't just be done by rewriting a document. So we're making sure that we're taking a multi-year approach to it. So you'll see that this code looks very similar to years past as we work through this shift. The purpose of the code of conduct, it is intended to be a set of policies that outline the expectation for anyone who sets foot on campus or attends any sort of district-sponsored events. The student handbooks, if you have students, as you all do, in the school, you know that students still either digitally or in hand receive a student handbook. Those are still very much operational. This is instead more global in terms of the district-wide picture. And so I'd just like to remind everyone, there's nothing new in this code of conduct. It's just a collection of board policies that are already approved, that are already on the books, that meet the legal requirements as outlined by the Commissioner. So as we have in years past and as is set forth in the regulation, there will be a public comment period. You can view all of your feedback. You can do so by accessing this Google form, by emailing myself. Again, this presentation is in Board Docs, or this will be posted on, and it will be posted on the district's website tomorrow morning as well.
Can I just ask, are there any substantial changes or improvements from?
No, none whatsoever.
Just, um, thank you. Okay, so if at this time, yes, if anyone from the community has any comments, if you've had a chance to review it, just actually, I'm going to follow up one more question. So it'll be on our website tomorrow. For how long? I think there's a follow-up meeting where we have a final vote.
Yes, thank you for that. So if, the way that we've worked this in the past is that we post it the morning after the public hearing. Community has an opportunity to comment. We come back at the next board meeting, review any of that feedback that community members might have. If there is a significant change that is proposed, we would do it at that point and ask for board approval at the next board meeting, which I believe is September 12.
So where it's posted, there's a link for some sort of comment online as well?
Yes, yes. So the Google form will take you to a place where you can type in any sort of feedback that you have. But the, are you asking about the code of conduct itself? Yes, it's also linked there.
Okay. Anyone? No comments? Okay, stay in line. I definitely move on. So we move on to administrative remarks. Gosh, I'm going to go first. Projected, continue, Dr. Gosh.
All warmed up, so I'll go. Thank you. I just have two comments this evening. The first is in regards to professional learning that took place this summer. I'd like to thank all the educators who attended, the numerous sessions that we held. They ranged from the foundational support that we need for the implementation of our K-5, our new K-5 math curriculum. We had book talk on project-based teaching. We worked extensively on our digital competencies at each building. We have an upcoming word planning session, just to name a few. So these opportunities were all results of ongoing committee work or liaison feedback, and hopefully will provide additional tools for our educators to take into the 2019-20 school year. And my last comment just is welcome to Dr. Gosh. You know, on behalf of Victor and Brent, and really the entire district administrative team, we welcome you. We're so thrilled you're here. In just 20 days, you've already established yourself as a collaborative leader who's open to input and feedback and wanting to learn about the community and what we do here while still having clear vision for moving forward. So we all look forward to this next chapter of your leadership.
Thank you, Dr. Gosh. Okay, um, turn around. Mr. Gosh, please.
Great, thank you. So just to first, a note of thanks. I think I'm in my sixth or seventh week, and I want to thank the board and the booster community for what's been a really wonderful transition. I've had an opportunity to meet with all of our administrators, a number of new administrators that are joining the team. Everyone's been incredibly supportive. I also just wanted to publicly thank my personal team, Ms. Judy Farrell, and Ms. Christine Christine Belter, who have been wonderful supports in the area of resources. It has been a busy summer with a number of new instructional hires as well as administrative hires, so we're looking forward to Monday to Tuesdays. We teach here, and we appreciate you.
Thank you. Mr. Carlson?
Good evening. I'm going to limit my comments because of the multitude of items on action item agenda. Just a quick update with regard to the director of facilities position. This afternoon, we held screening interviews and will be presenting three candidates to go forward to committee before presenting candidates to the board. We hope to appoint the position at the September 24 meeting and have a start date in late October. As you can see, outside the fields are starting to finalize. There's still a number of treatments that need to go into place in order to satisfy EEP's requirements. So you'll see, you know, those things start to go in within the next few weeks, and we're going to hope that the field will be done and complete as the students return back to school. That concludes my, actually, no, one more. I'm sorry. This morning, we had a finance committee meeting to review the current year assessments and tax rates as it relates to the adoption of the tax warrant tonight. So I just want to thank the finance committee for getting up early with us today and reviewing the information. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Dr. Gosh?
Yes, first, I want to say to the entire community, Mr. Community, and also to the board, it is an honor to be here to serve as your superintendent, and I'm looking forward to working with the board. I'm very excited to work with my boss to my left, Susan Gavin, my secretary, who's truly my boss. So she's been fantastic. The executive team that is sitting at the table here, I'm so happy that we're all together because I have an outstanding executive team. And over the next three years, three days, actually, I'm going to be working with our administrative team. I see Mr. Triller out there, and Dr. Zamberlin is out there. We have an administrative retreat coming up over the next three days to work together as a team. So we're really looking forward to that. And thank you also for welcoming me, everybody, to the district. And I want to thank some of the teachers because they've been working very hard maybe over the summer under Dr. Gosh's leadership with several initiatives. So thank you to the teachers for welcoming me throughout this process and also for working and doing some extra work over the summer on behalf of the students. So thank you.
Okay. So for my remarks, just wanted to provide an update that we had our work session last night and our retreat. And in the work session, it was reported, so for anyone who wants to go back and watch the few hours that that was. It was on our goal setting for the 2019-2020 school year, and we covered a lot of ground. And we'll be doing a formal presentation in upcoming September meeting for the goals for the year for both the district and the board. And I just wanted to say thank you again to the community because for the board's goals and even partially for the district's goals, we really dug into the survey that was done this past school year, past school year, and were able to pull from that to help us with some things, initiatives for the next year. So we discussed, you know, probably doing that again. We found it to be quite helpful. And the other just update is that it's in October, but we are beginning to start planning. So in October 24th through 26th, the New York State School Boards Association has its yearly convention. It's its 100th year anniversary. It's up in Rochester. And this year, so far, Scott and I are attending. If anyone else has any last minute desire to jump in on that, please let us know, along with Dr. Gosh. And we'll be heading up there and bringing back lots of information to help the district. So that's it for me for now. And so the students, yeah, soon, soon. And we now move on to presentations, recognition, discussion. And we have one item up for this evening, and it's the discussion regarding the right of public comment. So this item, you know, it's come up, it was one of the things in the survey, it's come up at different times throughout the year, you know, that sometimes is enough time. Currently, our policy states there's a two-minute time limit to allow the public to come up to podium and address the board with comments. And, you know, we thought it might be time to just revisit that and see if we're still good with that two minutes, or if we want to extend the length of time on it. Districts do all kinds of things. They've done a little bit of homework. Some have no time limit, and I actually watched them go until 1:00 in the morning. Others, you know, are on average around that three-minute mark. So I open for the rest of the trustees for comments and discussion on the topic.
Two minutes has always been tight. What I would like to do, and my suggestion, is make it double to four. And if anybody sits there and actually tries to talk nonstop for four minutes, it's a lot tougher than you think. So hopefully, that'll give most people the opportunity to say what they need to say, feel they can hear, and get their statement out without clogging down the night. So that would be my idea. Just going to double up, try it out, and see how it works.
And I just want to add for clarification also for the public. The reason we're having the discussion also is because it is a policy. So it currently stands as our governing ruling as to what we do. In order to change that, we have to have a discussion, we then have to go to policy committee for review on language, words, we check it over, changes to be made, and back to the board for, you know, to review it, and then a vote on officially changing that policy. So it's not just as easy as, okay, great, tonight, we're next immediate change. We have to go through that process, but first we have to have a discussion to even get there. So I'm sorry, just to clarify. So thank you. So who's up next on thoughts on?
I would say, I think, I think it's reasonable and responsible for us as a board, for all the people who are at the meetings, watching the meetings, to try to expect a little bit of people to be concise, prepare their thoughts beforehand. I would say in my time on the board and being at the meetings, usually the people who ran over the two minutes, it wasn't, I didn't find, I didn't get the impression that it was because they had more than two minutes' worth of material. It was because they hadn't kind of thought through it. And I know it's difficult to get up and speak in public and to have, to be, you know, I'm not expecting everyone to be incredibly precise, but I think four minutes, in my estimation, I could, I don't mind extending it, giving a little more time, but I think four minutes, especially when we get to some issues, if, when something comes up that's kind of a hot button, if we have even, you know, 15 or 20 people, we're going well over an hour getting comments on one particular issue, and I think that could potentially bog it down. So I wouldn't have a problem extending it, but I think four minutes starts, I think people will fill the time more than, I think the standard should be, try to get, be as quick and as concise as you can be as opposed to, you know.
So do you have a favor keeping it at two, or?
No, I would, I could either see two minutes and then potentially give people a second opportunity to come back that if they have two minutes, and, but usually it's two minutes, and once you've had one crack of the microphone, you're done for the night, whereas we could say two, but then you go back to the line, give someone else the opportunity or other people to speak, and then you have a second opportunity, or to extend it to two and a half, or even three.
Okay.
I mean, I personally think two minutes is enough time to make one or two or possibly three points if you think about them ahead of time. I agree with what Eric said about, you know, I think four minutes is too long. I'd be willing to go to three. I'd rather leave it at two, but I'm certainly willing to go to three if everybody thinks it should be extended, if someone comes in.
My same thing to Eric. I had the thought, if I'm going to extend it, I would consider no more than three minutes. I think people should come to the podium and be concise with their thoughts. So if there's any consideration with the group decides on, I would, you know, be considered to have the three-minute extension.
I think three minutes is a good amount of time, but I do like what Eric said about being able to come back up because people do get nervous and maybe they forget some of the points they wanted to make and they would like to come back up. I just worry that if they, it could get contentious if the conversation is going a certain way and maybe somebody, you know, wants to come up and, you know, say, have another couple of minutes to speak. I would hope that it wouldn't, I don't know, maybe make the conversation keep going or get too intense or something like that. So I'd probably, I'm more on the side of just giving the three minutes, and maybe that second, you know, time coming up could be something we could look at in the future, or is that something we have to decide on now?
I mean, if we're going to change a policy, that we should define what the change would be completely. I mean, a thought could be two minutes per topic because sometimes, you know, one person has many things, and one can take 30 seconds, another could take two minutes.
I know, but then who's in charge of deciding which topic, when it's changed, how many seconds that was discussed? I mean, that's too much, I think. And I think if we're going to extend it three minutes, there's no second shot. I mean, three minutes is a lot of time, but I mean, it's enough time to make a few points.
If you're going to go into a topic and you have that, you know, that circulation where somebody comes back up again, we're talking six minutes. You know, it could be very drawn out. I just think we just need to nail it down to a specific timeframe and go from there. I'm going to do three minutes and not consider having that rotation come right back up again.
Yeah, I don't know. I would advocate two, three-minute portions, either a two and a one, or a two and a two, something along those, if we did want to, because like, to Chris's point, I know I stood up as far as on the board stuff at meetings, sat back down, sat second to last, like, oh, I should have said it that way, or I should have done it. And maybe we put something out there that we ask people not to simply get up and reiterate what they've already said. That might try to kind of curtail people just getting up and having another bracket holding a really attention.
So what's just, I'm hearing everyone, and my thought is, so it's a, I don't know what to call it, slippery slope, I guess. So yes, there are times that we've had people who have come up again and repeated themselves or, you know, or have come up again because they've had additional things to discuss and two minutes wasn't enough. You know, there is also the argument to be made that, you know, we don't have, so a board meeting is difficult because it's our meeting for us to get business done, that we have to, we have to officially vote on stuff. And, you know, we allow the public to come and offer commentary and their thoughts on things going on in the district. If there are questions, we have included now that we do answer them, if we can, after that period is closed. You know, the concern is, because we've had, as we all know, we've had crazy meetings that they've gone out of hand. The other side to all of it is, we also want to make sure our community knows that we are hearing them and that we are giving them space to be heard and the time to be heard. And not everyone is thoughtful in terms of getting up there and addressing it. I mean, for us, it can be intimidating, so, you know, I can imagine. So yes, I do think, you know, at the very least, three minutes would be something to improve on. We can see how that works out through the course of the year. Yes, it's a few steps to change the policy, but it's not that complicated. Because I definitely want the community to know that we are trying to maintain order as well as allow space for people to be heard. You know, so as long as, let's say, we change it to three minutes, we live out the year, and it worked, then okay, it worked. And if we're still finding pockets of kind of roadblocks in how that's maybe not being as effective as we would like, then, because, you know, we don't want to have a buildup of frustration from community members that are not feeling heard, don't have enough time to speak, and then, you know, are yelling, the auditorium, which happens, or has happened. So really want to alleviate that, right? People get their frustrations out, they've said what they've had to say, they, it's done. So I mean, I guess perhaps then if we all enjoy the kind of things, three minutes could be a way to go. And then you're saying that there's one opportunity. I just, I, I think if someone comes up because they have additional things to comment on that are, it is new from something they've said previously, not rehashing, I don't know. I have just one issue with how do people sit down again, you know, not come and have an opportunity to come up again if they have something to say, if it's a different...
Well, I think the problem with that is that it's, it could become a chance for the person to stand up again, to refute something that someone else said in their comment that they don't agree with.
True, true.
And that's not what public comment is for.
Correct, correct.
And we have seen that just by yelling across the auditorium at each other. So I just think, you know, if we're going to extend the time, then that's, you know, you have more time.
Okay.
You know, there's time to think...
And I think it's important to keep in mind, too, this is not only one method of communicating with the board.
Right.
You know, if people feel they need more than, if they have more than three minutes' worth of information, or more than two minutes' worth of information, I understand that putting it out in public sort of gets more of a reaction, or, you know, sort of sometimes these things need to be said in public so that other people can become aware of these things. I understand that. But if you get, if there's more information that needs to get out there, then maybe it's more appropriate than email or some other type of communication.
And I think we actually, you reminded me, we have done that. We have said, you know, please email us whatever else, and people have composed letters very thoughtfully of what they were trying to convey. So that's a good point. We can always say, please email us if you have anything further, which we said as it was. Okay, so any other thoughts on, so three minutes is kind of where we think we're leaning toward? Are you, are you using four?
Three minutes is one.
And I just have a question.
Yeah.
So there's two times when people get the chance to speak. So it's halfway through the meeting and at the end.
Right, so the halfway through part, which we will be coming up next, is right before our action items. So we started doing that last year because we found that, you know, it's our responsibility to discuss and vote on the action items. What would happen is, public comment is at the end, and people are like, you know, I wish you had considered this, or I wish you whatever, and now it's done. So we thought, you know what, let's include an opportunity for community members to speak and share their thoughts on things we're going to vote on, specific just to that. And then we get the three minutes, I think, for that would be fair, right? And then anything additional later, that's separate, that's, you know...
So we can, they actually still get...
Yeah.
Sorry. Still get up to speak twice, they could speak...
Yes, in that context, yes.
Okay. But on different topics.
Right, because the first one would be specific to action items, and the second would be on any other matter that they want to share. Yeah.
That's good.
Okay, so then, if I can ask Dr. Gosh to pull up that policy, and I don't know, when you guys start meeting, or when the next?
September 10th, so it's the afternoon before a board meeting.
Okay, so perhaps, I mean, it really is not that much, it's just really changing the number, I think. Maybe look at the language one last time, and then we'll review it, and we can have it at the 24th meeting for a vote, given how it would have to be. Yeah. Okay, are we all, we're good? Okay, thank you very much. And so now we move on to public remarks. So if anyone has anything they'd like to comment on that is specific to any of the action items listed in Section F on today's agenda, for today, you have two minutes to share that. Please address the board and state your name. Anyone? Okay, so then we move on to actions. And number one is approval of the 2019-20 tax warrant.
Right, so I mentioned earlier that the finance committee met this morning to review the tax warrant, and the tax warrant being the board's direction to the tax collectors to begin issuing tax bills to the residents. Finance committee met this morning to discuss the things that were affecting the tax bills for 1920. As we all recall, during the budget process, Almgawick created an increase in the tax cap, which the board then adopted a tax levy of 4.06%. However, as we know, rarely will a homeowner see an increase in the tax bill of exactly 4.06% due to many, many variables that factor into the calculation, one of which is an increase in assessment. So we learned from the town of Southeast Assessors that homes in Southeast have increased in their value on average by five percent. Five percent as an average, so some may have increased by more than five, some less than five. Each homeowner's bill is going to vary, but because of that increase in the assessed values, it has an inverse relationship in the tax rates. So I included the presentation that was provided to the finance committee this morning. You'll see that the increase in the tax rates really across the board were nominal. On, for example, in Southeast, homeowners will see an increase in the tax rate by just 1.3%, Patterson, just 1.1%, Carmel, just 1.1%. That doesn't necessarily mean that a homeowner's tax bill will go up by those amounts, it's just the tax rate. So our finance committee again met this morning to review that and are recommending the warrant to the Board of Education for approval.
Thank you. You got a motion first, then a second? I, Carrie, Krista, thank you. Any questions or comments? For the tax warrant?
I don't believe this is a roll call, but it's required that each of the board members sign off on this, and then this is then provided to each of the towns, again, directing them to write the issue of tax bills.
One's true.
Set this around for signature, yeah.
If it's true, good. And thank you for your work, the finance committee here. Okay, so no questions or comments? All is in favor? And the motion passes, six, zero. Thank you. Yeah, let's just take a minute to sign that now. The official?
Also want to mention that it's such a complicated process, so I included it in that, in that presentation, a bunch of links to New York State Department of Tax and Finance that kind of simplifies the process. So if you have a moment, if you want to take a look at it, there's a lot of useful information in those links.
We move on now to action item number two, acceptance of donation for repair of tennis courts, approval of budget amendment number one.
Yes, so a community member, Tim Wallach, generously offered to assist in the repair of the tennis courts that took place this summer, and he offered a thousand... of the tennis courts that took place this summer, and he offered $1,000 to go towards the repairs. So I want to thank Mr. Tim Wallach for his generous donation to the district.
I need a motion and a second, please. Scott and Eric, thank you. Any questions or comments?
That was awesome. Thank you.
This might be odd. Do we send thank you notes?
Yes. So after this meeting, I send the thank you note, which also acts for tax purposes, letting you know that this donation is devoted to tax purposes.
They look nice. I think the tennis courts look nice.
They do look nice, and they changed up the colors.
Yeah, I like it better.
Mr. Berardo got input from the Scotches, and they like it. I think it's called U.S. Open, whatever.
Yeah, brighter.
Okay, so now we just...a motion, second. All those in favor? And motion passes, six zero. Thank you. Action item number three, disposal of district property, A cafeteria equipment, B transportation vehicles, and C technology equipment.
Yes, these disposals are in accordance with Order of Duty Policy 50250, are being recommended by each of the different departments for disposal. Cafeteria equipment, most of this equipment was actually secondhand from Garden Street, and as we closed that building, we relocated a lot of that equipment, and now it's out of date. Three buses are being recommended for disposal, number 248, 231, and 289. They range in age from 11 to 18 years. And that's part of, again, our fleet replacement plan, and we have a number of technology devices, mostly desktop computers that are aging out and are not...no longer supported by the latest version of Windows, and are being recommended for disposal in a secure manner.
Okay, thank you. We need a motion and a second, please. Glenn and Eric, thank you. Any questions or comments?
I just have a quick question. So it's three buses this time, the last meeting we had another three buses.
Correct.
And there's the one bus going to Lebanon.
Yep.
Should we look at the fleet replacement plan, or do you think the numbers that we're replacing are going to reflect what we're going to lose?
Yeah, so we typically don't know how many buses are going to go out of commission. We anticipate that it'll be somewhere around what are, you know, what we've been replacing from our buses that we requested in Proposition Number Two, and it's not always exact. We present that during the budget process, that some years will dispose of more than we take in, some years will dispose of less than we take in. But our fleet age has remained pretty consistent. Each year we have about 100 vehicles. I want to say it was maybe two years ago, we disposed of 13 vehicles and only took in eight, and that happens. You recall, we had a transportation program study. One of the recommendations in the study was actually for us to reduce our fleet in size, because we were holding onto vehicles as we typically do, well beyond what would be an ordinary useful life. And we did that to keep them as spares. But what we learned through the study is, those older buses require more repairs just to keep them running. So the recommendation is actually to let those older vehicles expire and not to replace them, as we often have. So our expectation is that our fleet is actually going to go down in size, and, you know, this is reflected on that.
Can I just ask a question about the laptops? Is there a way to donate those laptops, or what happens to them once we...
Jim, do you mind responding on our laptops, how we dispose of them safely and make sure that they're wiped and everything else?
What's the exact question?
How do we dispose of them? Is there a way to donate them to kids in need, or, I mean, what happens to them?
They really get to a point where they have no useful value for us, and then when we can cannibalize them to some extent, to take parts that we can use to fix the ones that we have. When we get to the point where they are decommissioned and not used anymore, they generally don't and aren't really useful to be donated out. And we don't have a method by which we, you know, afford, you know, any place to be able to give them to if it's, say, okay, well, it might be useful for another year for a child to be able to use it somewhere, to be able to do that. I'd be open to finding other ways to repurpose them, but we do have them disposed of, they're clean, you know, the hard drives are wiped clean and everything in terms of sanitized of any information. But in terms of additional useful life beyond what they've been used here, we try to find other places. We do reach out for organizations that are willing to take them. But generally, when they leave here, and I think John could probably agree, that they really aren't very useful once they're...once we've said, no, they're, you know, we're disposing of these. We do have a few now that are getting into the rotation that might have some useful life. I would be open to any suggestions if there are places where we could donate them beyond that to, you know, to give them, you know, some other use beyond just Brewster.
Jim, is it fair to say that these devices are no longer supported by the latest version of Windows? Is that...
Well, if you're talking specific, the devices, those other devices, they are no longer useful, they won't be supported with the newest operating system. But when you're talking about the Chromebooks, those do end their useful life. So even the, some of these newer two-in-ones, I think they're going to be running out as of 2023, that it will no longer, the operating system will no longer be supported. Now, I've had some of those around in my own house, that they just run into so many problems, while it's hard to say, oh, well, it still looks really nice. Unfortunately, the Chrome, there's advances so quickly that it does make it a little more challenging to give away. But if, you know, if there was a place where we could find someplace to give them, to even say, hey, you could use these for another year. They're not work, they, you know, they're kind of beyond our four-year rotation, but I haven't found that yet. So I'd be happy to look for that, or if you have suggestions of someplace where they could be put to use, we would certainly be open to that.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Motion passes, six zero. Okay, we move on to action number four, disposal of district property and like-kind acquisition of property, vehicle number 327, exchange.
Yes, so this vehicle is actually only four years old. However, it has experienced numerous breakdowns, all related to fuel induction. The vehicle is actually under warranty, so we didn't pay for any of the repairs because it was under warranty. However, Leonard Bus Sales recognized that this issue was not being remedied through their repairs, and they've actually offered to replace the vehicle at no cost to the district. And that wasn't an easy convincing. Mary Smith in our Transportation Department did a phenomenal job of negotiating that exchange, so I want to acknowledge Mary Smith for her diligence in that, and recommended the board that we exchanged that vehicle, and again, at no cost to the district.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thank you, Mary, as well. All those in favor? Motion passes, six zero. Approval of 2000...
Take a motion for that.
Do it. Oh.
Motion.
Okay, sorry if I didn't... So let's do that again, just to make sure. So a motion, Eric in a second, Glenn, thank you. Questions or comments? Okay, sorry, all those in favor? And motion passes, six zero. Thank you, Jesus. Everybody's lost. Approval of 2019-20 federal-state free and reduced price meal program policy.
Yes, in order for the district to participate in the Freedom Reduced Price Meal Program, the district must follow the USDA guidelines for nondiscrimination practices, eligibility requirements, regular retention, and hearing procedures for appeals, and this is an annual requirement each year presented to the board.
Okay, I need a motion and a second, please. Eric and Krista, thank you. Questions or comments?
So Victor, we have an increase this year of the number of students who are qualified for this?
Yes, 15 students above the prior year, which represents in total about 36% of our enrollment. Last year, I think it was about 34% of our enrollment. And I apologize, the memo that was attached to this resolution had a typo in the number. However, the numbers reported in the actual resolution were accurate. So the total number is 1,062 students. As we all know, enrollment fluctuates, so too does the number of students eligible for free and reduced lunch. At this point in time, it represents an increase of 15 students from the prior year.
Is that typical of districts in our area, to have that percentage for free lunch?
Or... I'm not sure what percentages other districts have. Again, Brewster, it's been, you know, it's certainly been rising. This year, it increased by just half of a percent. The federal government establishes the rates, you know, the thresholds, eligibility requirements, and that's a national threshold, so it's not a Brewster number, it's not even a New York number, it's a national number. So the federal government establishes that threshold for which households would qualify for free or reduced lunch. But I can't speak to other districts, and if that's, you know, typical, obviously, you know, wealthier districts, we would probably have a lower number of free and reduced eligible families.
Do you...I don't know if you know this, I'm sorry if you don't, but isn't a certain percentage kind of automatic?
Yes, and actually, a few years ago, I want to say it was in the spring of 2018, we made a presentation in April, and Kathy Hancock presented a change in the USDA guidelines, which automatically qualifies families for free and reduced lunch if they're receiving any other form of government assistance. Whereas in the past, families would have to proactively fill out an application. The federal government changed that so that they don't have to fill out an application, they're automatically enrolled. And as soon as that happened, and I want to believe, I want to say it was two years ago, as soon as that happened, the number of free and reduced eligible families increased, not only in Brewster, but also in the surrounding districts.
Do we know what percentage of that is in auto, kind of, auto-enrolled in it?
You know, I'm pulling up the presentation from April 24th, 2018, which is in board docs, and I believe that was discussed in the presentation.
It's okay, it's fine. I just...
For the 17-18 school year, according to this presentation, there were 794 students that were directly certified, out of 922 students on free lunch and 101 on reduced, which would be easy enough for me to do.
You know what, actually, there's a footnote at the bottom. 78% of students in 17-18, 78% of students who are free or reduced eligible are qualified through the direct certification method, meaning that those numbers were reported to the district regardless of whether or not a family filled out the application. The federal government automatically said, these students are eligible for free and reduced lunch.
Yes, so that's a big number. Okay, I thought it was, but that wasn't a number. So thank you for pulling that up, I'm sorry.
Victor, would you happen, I apologize to ask in more details the numbers, but do you know what last year's increase was?
Yes, I can pull that up.
In the free and reduced rate? Is that a question?
Yeah, I have it, Michelle. So in 1819, it increased, it increased by 71 students from the prior year. So there's an increase in 71 students from the prior year going into 1819, and now there's an increase of just 15 students going into 1920. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? And motion passes, passes six zero. Move on to action number six, approval of 2019-20 district-wide emergency response plan.
Yes, our School Health and Emergency Preparedness Committee met to review the district-wide safety plan as well as the building-level safety plans. Building-level safety plans are, have restricted information or not for public consumption. However, the district-wide plan is, it's a requirement that be approved by the Board of Education before the start of the school year. It's posted to our website, available for viewing. It's being recommended for the board's approval this evening. One change that is going to impact the district is a change to our lockdown procedures, which we're still discussing internally. However, the lockdown procedures will now take effect for next year, that when one building gets locked down, all buildings get locked down. And we're planning our first drill with the assistance of the Southern County Sheriff's Department, I believe, in October.
Okay, thank you. Motion, please, and a second. Glenn and Krista, any questions or comments on this?
I have a couple questions. Last year, I know we had met with a number of presenters on some automated systems for improvements to the procedures. Does any, did we go through and approve any of that? Was any of that implemented?
In terms of the lockdown automation?
Right.
Yes, that's a new system, and Mr. Tralor is here, and I'm going to ask him to speak to that system.
So right now, what we have in place, and we actually did a number of tests just today, is that there's three different ways that you can initiate a lockdown. One is a lockdown button at each of the greeter desks in each of the buildings, well, each of the four schools, and then the district office. From Informicast mobile, that we have right now, administrators and a number of office staff, everybody that would be around in the front of the building, have access to be able to initiate the lockdown from their phones. We're looking to expand that for next year. The other way to initiate it is from any of the Cisco phones, that you put in a code based on this building that you're in. And what that automatically does is it locks down, it puts on an alert over our radio system, it then alerts 911 and the sheriff immediately, so they know that there's a threat in CB Star Elementary, Intermediate School. Then it also sends out a P.A. announcement throughout the entire district that all the, all buildings are on lockdown because of a threat at CB Star Elementary. It sends out text notifications, it sends out email notifications, just to staff and in the building. And then it also locks the doors automatically, except to first responders, which are any of the sheriffs. We will have, they'll have lock, they call them Knox boxes, at each of the buildings that they'll be able to open, and they'll have cards that'll be able to get them in, so they can get in, but nobody else. Should there be a threat inside the building and also somebody else outside, the idea then that they can't go in. So that's the automation as it is right now. Oh, the message also goes out over all of the phones, and both an audio and a text message, so, which we just installed new desk phones in all of the classrooms for added security, for both the messaging and also the capabilities that teachers have to be able to initiate or lock down, as well as the bonus of being able to have improved communication with parents, so.
I just want to add something. Thank you, Jim. And also Victor, thank you. We, before this happens, the October 4th drill that we're having, we're going to be sure to notify the community that it is a drill, that it is a practice drill. We are having communications internally with the chef, with that committee. We will be, we can always make things better. So we will go back, we will have tabletop discussions about it, and we will have a board representative on the committee, so that we can make sure that whatever we're doing, we're doing the right thing, or if we need improvement, we will.
And we do have added complexity here in Brewster that many other districts don't have, because we have so many buildings in close proximity. So it just takes a lot to configure all of that. And so, you know, in terms of tweaking and making sure that it's fine-tuned for any of the staff here who have been part of, you know, getting these alerts on their phones and everything, these tests have been ongoing, because we really want to make sure that when anybody picks up a phone, or, you know, does it, pushes that button to make that alert, that all the messages get to where they need to be and everything. So it's been, we still have, even after today, probably a couple more tests to do, so. Thanks.
The conversation's so engaging, I wish to ask Susan, are we...
Motion, please. Glenn, Krista.
Good, okay. So any other questions or comments?
One other question, sorry. I saw some write-ups from New York State on other policies throughout the areas, and they had mentioned one, which was a threat assessment team, which is an organization within the school, usually made up of law enforcement, the psychologists, administration, that when that threat comes in, such as a social media threat, somebody found something on the bathroom walls, they're the ones that go through the policy, and they review whether it's an action. I don't know if that's something we do in New York, or something we should consider.
We do. Do you want to take it?
Sure. And each of the...
Sure, in each of the buildings, there is a team, we always go by the credo, never think alone, to make sure that when there, a threat comes in, administrator meets with the SRO, meets with whatever clinical staff happens to be there, or a school counselor, to say, you know, what are all the factors that we have, and then what are, and go through protocols, and then what are the steps that we need to take to make sure we're proactive and support the student as well.
And just to add to that, we subscribe to a coaster through BOCs, it's a safety coaster, and they allow us to attend training, you know, as part of that coaster, one of which is a threat assessment team training. So over the past two or three years, a few times throughout the year, we've sent staff members to BOCs to receive that threat assessment training, to then come back and turnkey to each of the other buildings. I believe we've always sent at least a member of the secondary, from the secondary school and the elementary school to go back and then turnkey when they get that.
Any more? Okay, seeing none, all is in favor? Motion passes, six zero. Number seven, approval of memorandum of understanding with the VTA regarding welfare fund contributions.
Yes, this simply clarifies the welfare fund contribution, that it's based on contractual year, July 1st to June 30th, and not the welfare fund's planned year, which is September 1st, August 31st.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion in a second, please? Eric, thank you, and Carrie, questions or comments on this? Seeing none, all is in favor? Motion passes, six zero. Number eight, approval of health services contract for the 2017-18 school year.
Yes, this is a reimbursement to a school district that provides health services to Brewster residents who attend private schools within their bathrooms.
Need a motion in a second, please? Glenn and Krista, questions or comments?
So, any reason it's 1718, it's just one that fell through the cracks?
And unfortunately, this happens. I did reach out to our attorneys about statutes of limitations, and there are none, with regard to health service contracts, so even if they were to come back, you know, several years later, the district would still be obligated to refund the public school.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all is in favor? Motion passes, six zero. Number nine, approval of instructional services contracts for A Hawthorne Country Day School, B Mount Pleasant Cottage School, U F S D Seabed Third Central School District, and D Fox Lane Middle School.
Yes, these are contracts for our special needs students who are placed out of districts. Contracts have been reviewed by our attorneys, are being recommended for approval by this committee.
Thank you, need a motion please, in a second? Scott and Glenn, questions or comments? Seeing none, all is in favor? Motion passes, six zero. Number 10, award of purchase contracts for instructional athletic and custodial supplies pursuant to competitive bids.
Yes, each year, we participate in a program and data services for the purchase of instructional supplies, the results are then cross河流 into the district, and you can see from the attachment, over the course of the year, the district has saved $226,000 by utilizing this program.
Thank you, need a motion in a second, please? Carrie and Eric, thank you, questions or comments? Seeing none, all is in favor? Motion passes, six zero. Number 11, approval of Brewster Central School District Annual Professional Learning Plan for 2019-2020.
Yes, thank you, I'll take that one. As we have in years past, we submit our annual professional learning plan for board approval. This plan was crafted largely with input from our professional learning team, meet on an ongoing basis throughout the year, and then in June, we have a day-long retreat where we take into account state mandates, changing learning standards, New York State professional learning standards, and our district priorities. We also ask staff to give their input throughout the year through various surveys and other means of feedback, so we submit this plan for your approval, and it is also a New York State Education Department annual report.
Thank you. Need a motion in a second, please? Krista and Glenn, thank you, questions or comments? Seeing none, all is in favor? Motion passes, six zero. Number 12, approval of multi-tiered system of support, MTSS, plan for 2019-2020.
Yes, thank you. The MTSS plan outlines our academic and social-emotional supports for students across grades K through 12. As students demonstrate a need, we aim to provide more targeted, intensive support in a really systemic manner. So this document outlines the philosophy, the possible interventions by tier and category, and common documentation that we use throughout the system. So as we did in the year prior, we submit this document for your approval.
Thank you. I need a motion in a second? Carrie and Scott, thank you, questions or comments?
Is there any major changes or differences?
Not this year. Last year was a major overhaul. This year, we feel like we're in a good place and cruising along with it, although there are always adjustments.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all is in favor? Motion passes, six zero. Number 13, approval of signed stipulation of settlement.
I'll take this one, this was discussed by our attorneys in executive session, it's being recommended for approval by the board.
Thank you. Motion in a second, please? Krista and Carrie, thank you. Questions or comments? We discussed it. All is in favor? Motion passes, six zero. Number 14, approval of mentor-coach employment agreement with Teresa Cherry.
Okay, I believe I'm taking this one. So the district, as you're aware, had the good fortune of having Ms. Teresa Cherry as an interim principal last year during the transitionary period at CB Star. We're fortunate to have Ms. Cherry back to provide some mentoring to a new administrative team at CB Star, both Mr. Keith Allen, the new assistant principal, and Ms. Maggie Andrea, the new principal at CB Star.
Thank you. Need a motion in a second? Carrie and Scott, thank you. Questions or comments?
Any projection on how many hours is that contract used for? Twenty days in the contract, twenty days?
Yes, we reevaluate at that point.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all is in favor? Motion passes, six zero. Number 15, approval of agreements with tutoring agencies, Creative Tutoring Inc., Strategic Learning Inc., The Learning Shop.
Yes, thank you. So there are students throughout the year that are in need of temporary instruction, it could be due to a medical issue or disciplinary issue. So the process is that VTA members by contract sort of have the right of first refusal, they have the opportunity to tutor a student first. If no VTA member is available, then we go out to a third party to provide that instruction. So these were three companies that we have used in the past, and feel comfortable with. Please also note that we have internal processes in place to make sure that the tutoring is approved by the appropriate administrators, they have a final approval with me in the district office, and we make sure we track and have multiple ways to check to make sure that when the billing comes in, that the tutoring itself is approved, and that we're, everything matches.
Thank you. Need a motion in a second, please? Carrie, Glenn, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all is in favor? Motion passes, six zero. Move on to number 16, approval of agreements, A, school resource officers, and B, special patrol officer.
Yes, these are our annual agreements with Putnam County for four school resource officers, new to the 2019-20 school year. We will have four school resource officers, one in each building. In addition, we will have one special patrol officer relocated to Brewster High School, who was previously in CB Star.
Thank you, need a motion in a second, please? Krista and Glenn, questions or comments?
So, Victor, this agreement runs July through June?
Yes.
So we are paying July and August when the school is in session and the SROs are not here?
Yes.
Can you kind of explain how that came to be?
So, I learned that the county approached the school districts and explained that the county cannot absorb the two-month salary over the summer while the SROs, you know, while the, I'm sorry, they couldn't absorb the salary over the summer, or couldn't absorb the salary over the summer because an assignment didn't exist for the SROs over the summer. And they request that the school districts pick up the extra two months of the summer in lieu of paying for health insurance, or something to that effect. And full disclosure, I was not involved in those conversations, so I'm having a very difficult time explaining exactly what those conversations were, but I can certainly reach out to the county and get a better explanation. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all is in favor? Motion passes, six zero. Number 17, approval of MOA with VTA for a 1.0 math specialist for instructional support services.
Sure, so this MOA outlines responsibilities for our K-5 math specialist, which was approved in the 2019-2020 budget. So the idea with the specialist will be that this individual will be providing support to teachers at the K-5 level as they implement the new mathematics curriculum, but also, you know, once we get past that initial hurdle, work on pedagogy and best practices when it comes to mathematics instruction at the elementary level. So this specialist will provide some professional learning, and really will be a resource to teachers at both of the elementary schools. So I'd like to thank the VTA for partnering with us in getting this MOA approved, or ready to submit for your approval. And I'd also like to thank the K-5 math task force who identified the need for such a position last year, and of course, to the board and community for supporting it.
Thank you, need a motion please, in a second? Scott and Krista, any questions or comments?
I just have one question, is this then sort of a temper, not tempering for this year, but if it's for the purposes of sort of getting everybody up to speed and on the same page with the new math curriculum, once that's done, is this not going to be needed anymore, or is there a vision for a different use for this position?
So this is, I think, maybe a long-term conversation to have about sort of the role of coaches in the district. We've spoken extensively through our different committees and task forces about the need to provide instructional support to our teachers, one of our, sort of one of our own that is there to provide, you know, ongoing and job-invented professional learning and support. So it would be my dream to see this position continue, and I think definitely at the K-5 level, where many of our teachers are not mathematic content specialists, right? This is a, this would be a good investment, but we have to, of course, see how this shakes out with all the priorities moving forward.
Thank you. If I could echo, also, in several districts I've been in throughout my prior experiences, they've had math coaches and language arts coaches, K to eight, that are, you know, teachers that are well-seasoned teachers, that are model teachers, they do model lessons, so it's something for the board to consider moving forward, it's been highly effective, and job embedded instruction, and PD, job embedded PD is truly the best, research-based PD, professional development for teachers, and it is extremely, you get the right person in the position, it is extremely valuable for growth of all the teachers and the effectiveness in the classroom for students, which is something to consider.
Yes, and if I could actually take this opportunity then, to talk about how we had the instructional technology specialist, which was a K-12 position, who provided that ongoing support that we, you know, currently are now entering year two of not being funded, that hurt in terms of being able to push this forward, so, I agree.
Just for thought.
Yes.
And that second is already included in the budget, so it's already part of...
Yeah, this position is included in, yes.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all is in favor? And motion passes, six zero. Okay, move on to our consent agenda. Anything of note?
Sure, a few quick highlights of the board notes, that we have four new instructional hires, it has certainly been a busy July and August in the science department of Brewster High School, so we're pleased to welcome Daniel Carlton and Robert Daly to Brewster High School. Additionally, with Mr. Hora's retirement in the middle school, that can be a very challenging position to fill, and we're pleased to welcome Glenn Palmyer as part of the staff at Wells Middle School, along with Adriana Wall, all of them. And then finally, just wanted to make note of our two new administrative appointments this evening. We're delighted to welcome Lauren Cole, the new assistant principal of Brewster High School, will be in tomorrow. I want to certainly acknowledge Dr. Gosh for all her good work and help and support in helping to facilitate what I thought was a healthy and rich process, along with Ms. Hora in high school, she had quite a committee of voices who share their various perspectives on the candidates that we've brought forward, as well as Ms. Kennedy with our assistant director of people personnel services, that will work in concert with her, specifically with our secondary students.
Thank you. Yes, I need a motion in a second for the consent agenda. Scott and Carrie, thank you. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
I'm very happy to see this long list of extracurricular activities across the students' kids, and it's incredible to stop there, and to see that we did replace Mr. Hora, you teach 30-something years in the district, and I assume it's a very difficult person to find, but I'm so happy to see that we're keeping that position and bringing somebody in.
Seeing none, all is in favor? And motion passes, six zero. And we now move on to remarks. We have four remarks, four event committee updates, and actually, if I could just start, just point out on our agenda, we added for after this portion, summary of email communications to the board, so I'll just, I'll make a comment after this section, but that allows for us to share with the community exchanges that may have happened, or emails that may have come in. We wouldn't identify who specifically sent what, but we would categorize, you know, we got 10 emails talking about how great, you know, the school just started, or 10 about how it did. Because we can actually just get them, we're not just negative, but we do get some positive ones, we do get positive. So we're able to share that, we thought that was important, and also, you know, some of the emails we get have content in there that are for us to consider in decisions that we make, so we'll bring that, there weren't any this time, so, but are there any other four remarks this evening?
I would just say something, just to add to the addition of that summary, the purpose of doing this is because if we're getting inquiries or comments from one member of the public and providing some sort of response to them, it's really a response that applies to everyone, so, you know, it's just a way of summarizing what comes in and what went out. You know, so everyone receives the benefit of that information, not just the one person who sent the email.
So, August was not much else to update on, other than finance, or anything else going on? No? Okay, and so we can move on to public remarks. I have a question, I'm not sure when, I have a thought that we might, for our future agendas, switch public remarks and have it be first in remarks, and then board in summary be second. My thinking is that if we do public remarks first, then when we close that portion, we can go right into answering any questions that we would do anyway, if we can, but it would just kind of, I think would help with...
It would be on our board remarks.
It would be, like, it would allow, and then for anyone else to comment, I think it would just help with the flow, because we do our stuff, and then they talk, and then we come back to us, and, or, you know, then again, we have our remarks, and people could have something they want to say about it, but I don't know if people have thoughts on just switching that piece, if it's, maybe it's much easier to switch that? Yeah, okay, so maybe the next one will try that for today. We'll move on to public remarks, two-minute limit for tonight, still, and please address the board, state your name, and welcome. Please, if you could come up, thank you.
Hi, I'm Connie Hussey, and I would just like to say, as we're discussing the beginning of the school year, I've been here many years, and I've seen, each year, it just gets better and better and better, so I'm thinking... and better and better, so I'm thinking, you know, smooth, you know, from what I've seen, I've not seen too many glitches, so I'm just guessing that this one is going to be another, you know, A-OK, great beginning of the school year. I'm looking forward to it.
Any other takers?
They're waiting for three minutes.
Okay, so we'll close the comment, public remark portion. Any other comments, remarks, questions, can you email to the board education? And, did we include update? Okay, yes, so during, we, actually, I also included for our agendas now, to just before we officially close the meeting, to have an update officially on upcoming meetings. So just kind of a reminder to the public and ourselves as to what's happening. And we have our opening day, our convocation happening on September 3rd, and then first official day of school is September 4th, and then our next board meeting will be September 10th. So I just need a motion to close. Carrie and Glenn, thank you. All those in favor? And we are adjourned, six zero. Thank you.